... County and Oshkosh Media. This event is being simulcast on Oshkosh Radio FM 101.9. Recordings can be found on the Oshkosh Media YouTube page and replay schedules for government TV can be found on oshkoshmedia.org. I'm Margie Davey, President of the League and tonight's moderator. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate, and despite our name, we do welcome men. We welcome everyone. You can learn how to join at lvwwinnebago.org or by asking any of our members here tonight, all of whom are wearing League buttons. In addition to organizing forums like this, the local League also hosts monthly presentations that are timely and informative. Some of our upcoming speakers will deliver news on public education budgets and vouchers, discuss the county community health assessment and improvement plan. An attorney who handled the Fair Maps case will be sharing, and we'll learn what Tri County Dental does. The League holds voter outreach events to help people register to vote, request an absentee ballot, and find their polling place. We also provide information on current issues. We regularly partner with other nonpartisan organizations on events to expand our local reach, and we meet with school district and government officials to share ideas on how we can best serve our communities. How can you learn about what we're doing? The League publishes a monthly newsletter and has an active Facebook page. For more information about the League of Women Voters, access our website at lvwwinnebago.org. Early in-person absentee voting allows voters who cannot reach their polling places on Election Day to vote beforehand. In the city of Oshkosh, early voting for the spring election will take place at 19 East Irving Avenue, a change from the previous location in City Hall. Check with your town or city clerk for more information. Not everybody in the school district is also in the city of Oshkosh, so you may need to check with your clerk. The League of Women Voters facilitates vote411.org, an online candidate and voter resource where all candidates for all races are invited to answer questions. When you, the voter, put in your address, you learn which races will be on your ballot, which candidates are running for each office, and candidate responses to the questions. If there are no responses, that means the candidate chose not to participate. We encourage you to then reach out directly. Candidates are applying for a job, and every voter should know how they plan to do that job. We call this being an informed voter. You can also visit myvote.wi.gov to check your voting status and for more information. Please turn off any electronic devices. No audience recording is allowed. Tonight, four candidates are competing for Oshkosh Area School Board for a three-year term. They are incumbent Christopher Carnes, Chris Rice, and Beth Wyman, who is unable to attend this evening, and challenger Timothy Hess. Joining me on the panel is Karen Schneider, publisher of the Oshkosh Herald and Nina News. Public questions were solicited in advance. Those of you in the audience may also wish to submit questions on the cards provided. Just wave them in the air and a League member will take them. Questions must be for all candidates and may not single out a candidate. Questions may be edited for brevity and clarity, and while we hope to cover as many as we can, we may not have time for all. Candidates, please keep your answers concise so we may cover as many issues as possible. Our timekeeper, who will wave at you right now, will give you cues. Please heed the stop sign so I don't have to cut you off, and I will. Concise answers will allow time for more questions. This is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for each question. And with that, we will have opening statements. You now have two minutes each to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking election or reelection to the Oshkosh Area School Board. Why should voters choose you over your opponents? Going alphabetically, we'll be starting with you, Tim.
Wonderful. Well, first, allow me to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on, and thank you, everyone in the audience, for attending this evening. My name is Tim Hess. I grew up in Berlin, Wisconsin. I came to UW-Oshkosh in 1992. I left Oshkosh for a little bit to serve in the military and then pursue some graduate degrees. I've earned a PhD in Educational Statistics and Research Methods from UW-Madison and then moved back. I was a professor of mathematics at Ripon College. I'm a veteran and a captain and commander, former captain and commander in the Wisconsin Army National Guard, and my youngest kid just graduated Oshkosh West like two years ago, so I know the system. I'm invested in this community. I have invested as a developer and through public service. I'm an emeritus board president for Habitat Oshkosh and serve on the board of Go EDC. I love this community. I love my family, my friends, and neighbors, and I want us to thrive here, and that means that we need to have a great public education system. When my family moved back to Oshkosh, the state of mathematics achievement in Oshkosh, we were in the top of the state. In English Language Arts, not so much. And the thing is that since that time, we haven't seen any improvement in reading, despite the bulk of our efforts being focused there, and our math achievement has plummeted such that now in both areas, less than 36% of students are proficient. This is troubling, to say the least. However, what is more troubling to me is that what I hear most when listening to administrators is platitude and rhetoric. Instead, we need to demand results. We need to improve achievement, stop declining enrollment, build trust with parents, community members, and teachers, and reduce disparities in all forms. My experience and expertise will allow me to help ensure significant improvements in these areas or otherwise hold the appropriate people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Christopher, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. My name is Christopher Carnes, and I'm running for reelection to the Oshkosh Area School District School Board. I have two boys, one in sixth grade and one in ninth. I also have a niece who is graduating this spring, also from Oshkosh West. My wife is in the process of becoming a teacher, so all of this is very personal to me. I have lived in Oshkosh my entire life, graduated from Oshkosh West, graduated from UW-Oshkosh, spent my life in this city, and I love this community. I love this city. One of my goals over the last three years was to get into every one of the schools, and I have accomplished that goal. Even though I've lived in the city my whole life, I had not been in every building, and I thought it was very important that when we're making decisions sitting around a board table or boardroom, that we should be understanding how those decisions affect all students in all parts of our city. I believe our school board over the last three years has accomplished a lot, and we are setting ourselves up for generational changes in our district in the coming years. I want to continue to see the growth going forward. When I started, we didn't have a superintendent, and now we have a tremendous Superintendent Dr. Davis. We needed to have a strong foundation before we were able to make the types of changes this community deserves, and this is what we have done over the last three years. When I started, we were a district of schools, and now we are becoming a school district. We are becoming better at making sure we have the right people in the right places to make the right decisions to help our students and our community. We have prioritized literacy, and much of the reason we have this conversation about accountability is because the current board has decided to put that in policy to hold people accountable, and we will start to see those changes. Our facility plan and continuing that is incredibly important to make sure that we have the resources in the right place to help the right communities and the right students. I've absolutely enjoyed the last three years, and I look forward to continuing this journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next, we'll go to Chris Wright.
Hi. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. I am currently the treasurer on the school board. I've chaired and/or been on every school board committee. This has given me a ton of experience over the past three years. I'm a very active school board member. I'm out in the community regularly, meeting with parents and kids. Currently, my kids attend West High School, Traeger Middle School, and Tipler, so I have kids in three schools in the district. I've been married to my wife for 15 years, bless her, because she allows me to do this and to take time away from my family to try to ensure that all students are getting the education that they deserve. In my professional work, I've worked with individuals in the Oshkosh community that have disabilities. They're either developmentally disabled, physically disabled, or frail elderly, and I work hard to make sure that they can remain in their homes and that they can have the things that they need to keep living in their homes, and that's had a profound effect on how I serve as a school board member. We're members of Grace Lutheran Church. I coach and have coached a ton of youth teams, because that's very important to me. Every day when I drop my kids off at school, I see kids that I've coached, and I watch the kids go into school, and, you know, I feel like they're my kids. Through the last three years on the board, we've seen lots of improvement. We've led the district through COVID. We were in a very different place before I started out on the school board. We didn't have, we had to pick a new superintendent. We had to put a whole bunch of new systems in place, and there's still a lot more to do, but the systems are being put into place for us to be successful. I can say we're a lot better off than we were three years ago, but there's still a lot of work to do, and thank you.
Thank you. We have one more candidate, and Karen is going to be reading her statement.
This is Beth Wyman's statement, as she was not able to be here. So, "Good evening. I do apologize for not being there in person. I am out of town with family on a trip we planned last summer. I am excited to run for a second term for the Oshkosh Area School District School Board. In the past three years, we have accomplished so much, and I'd like to see many of the projects we started come to fruition. I have three primary areas of focus. One, community. It is imperative that we continue to get our community engaged in public education. We need parents, mentors, advocates, and business relationships to foster collaboration with our schools. There are so many citizens with extra time that could provide the much-needed involvement to help in the educational experience. Recently, we had a community volunteer fair. It was exciting to see the number of people that wanted to get involved. We will continue to celebrate the positives, but let the community know about our shortfalls and ways that they can help us succeed. We also need to continue to talk with the area businesses with regards to skill trends that are needed in the community. Career and technical education is a growing field for opportunities for many of our students." Two, literacy. We have made positive strides in literacy and have built a foundation on which to compare results. The work is hard and not always as quick as we would like, especially as we take into account the 61 languages that are spoken in our district. Consistency in teaching practices, accountability from the executive team, a positive culture within all of the schools for families, students, and teachers are showing the up-trending results. A district with a high literacy rate attracts businesses, talent, and workforce for the community. Our current practices will set us up to succeed. Three, facilities. We have learned from the opening of Vell Phillips that learning spaces do make a difference. Culture, rigor in learning, and hands-on experiences in the classroom ensure students and teachers become more engaged. Facilities Plan 1 and 2 were built on community input, which then resulted in a positive referendum outcome. The result was two new schools, completed deferred maintenance, and secure vestibules for all of our school entrances. We should never again be in a situation where we are playing catch-up for our facilities. A comprehensive proactive approach to maintenance and school consolidation will improve classroom experiences for students and staff and a reduction of operational expenditures. Thank you for this opportunity. Beth Wyman.
Thank you, Beth. We're sorry that we weren't able to have this on tonight when she was available, but we were running out of options. There's a lot going on this year. So now, we will ask public policy questions submitted in advance or by the public tonight at the forum. You will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question, and since we started with Tim last time, we'll start with you, Christopher, with our first question. Let's start with a softball.
There are no softballs.
What policies can the board put in place to address bullying?
I mean, I think it's important that the school board sets, so one of our primary goals as a school board is setting policy. We have a couple very important items. One is overseeing the superintendent, and one of them is setting policy. If there's a policy that needs to be tweaked, words that we need to change in there to make sure that we get the outcome that we want, we have a duty to do so. If there's opportunities within any of those, I would love the opportunity to have those conversations, to see what we can do better. But I think a lot of those would probably come down to the building levels, to see what the conversations are being had from the leadership teams within those buildings, what the teachers are seeing. I believe a lot in having those communication with the people who are doing the work and taking feedback from what is happening in the buildings. And so if the teachers are seeing areas that we can improve, if the principals, the administration team thinks that there's areas that we can improve, then I would love to hear the feedback on that, and we have committees that we sit around and can discuss those items before brought to the board. And so those might be a perfect opportunity to have those conversations at that level. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I chaired the policy committee for a year, and now I'm currently on it. But we have policies that govern pretty much anything in the school district, and if those, I don't know the bullying, I don't know the policy that pertains to this specific issue word by word, because I'd have to know the scenario, et cetera. But if there's issues with the policy, those issues can be brought to us by administration or before our board meetings, when we have time available for people to come and speak, and then we can see how we want to tweak the policy to make sure that it's better addressing the issue at hand. We certainly don't want any kids getting bullied in our schools, and we certainly want to have the appropriate responses to those issues from both sides. My daughter that's in high school right now, I just read a letter on this today. We have the Speak Up, Speak Out app, which is really good, so I know, like, my daughter and some of her friends, if they're feeling bullied or anything's occurring in the high school, they're able to report that information, and then administration's able to follow up on it. So I'm hoping that that will continue, because I know that it's been beneficial to a lot of kids. But everything's always evolving and changing, and if there's ways that we can strengthen our policies through good communication and collaboration, that's something that we've done and will continue to do to make the school district a better place for all kids. But certainly, we don't want kids getting bullied. I don't want any kid getting bullied. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Tim?
Softball.
You should hear the other questions.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to echo what Chris had said about the Speak Up, Speak Out app, that getting notified of it is probably going to be our best way to intervene. I think one of the things that I would like to see happen, whether it is bullying or many other of the things that we're likely to talk about tonight, is where I struggle is, I just, I don't hear the voice from the teachers or from the counselors. It is primarily just the voice of the administration that the Board of Education hears, and I think we need to hear from those other people that are the frontline workers to come in and help us understand what is going on. Now, I appreciate that you guys are getting some feedback from them. I'm not saying that at all, but to try to find ways that we get more information from those people that are on the front lines to help us set those policies, that's the sort of initiative that I want to see happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I will give you a softball, and we're going to start with you, Chris.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Describe the three most important strengths of the district, and then what is the most important change you think the school board needs?
The most important strengths of the district? Right now, I would say that we have stable leadership. That's very important. If you look around other districts, and certainly our districts before we hired Dr. Davis, things can go awry very quickly if there's a stable administration or a stable superintendent on the top. Number two, obviously, teachers are the backbone of the district, including paraprofessionals. Without having top-notch people in those roles, we're never going to be the district that we could become. And another strength of the district currently is I think, like, right now, we're in a process of kind of reshaping it. We're getting more data that comes to the board. We're getting better systems put in place. We're being able to monitor and react to things differently. You're only as good as what your system is telling you and the information that you're getting from all over the system, and we certainly have a lot of things to work on. We do, but I think we're building those things out. And do I have a third thing left?
What is the most important change you think the school board needs?
The most important change that the school board needs is I think that we need to keep refining communication tools and how we're getting information. I really like getting information from different groups. Like, I was a part of a group where we met with the teachers directly, and I received a ton of good information from that. When we met with paraprofessionals directly, we received a ton of good information from that. So I just want to make sure that I'm getting enough information from all the areas to help make informed decisions. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Tim?
Three things that I think are good in this district right now. First, I think I do appreciate the board members. I appreciate, especially as of late, the implementation of the listening session. I think that is important to actually get feedback when people come and have these sorts of conversations. I would also echo Chris's comments about the teachers and the frontline staff, that they are the ones that I talk to, they have concerns, but they're passionate. They want to see the kids succeed to a very substantial extent. So that is another great thing. I do appreciate the administration. I do believe that we have some very sound professionals there. I think they have some challenges, but I know I can see them in our future helping lead us to it, but I think we have some areas to work on. So what do I think we need to work on in terms of the board? I think our board really struggles with accountability. I think, for example, we hear about improvements. We heard the strategic plan for how we were going to improve things, yet last Wednesday, you guys heard for the first time the iReady results, and if you compared those results to last year, you saw, like in math, we increased by .3%. Well, that's not tangible results, so I'm struggling with that, and I think our board needs to figure out what it is they need to ask from administration to actually be able to hold people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Christopher?
Thank you. There's a tremendous amount of value of being the last one who gets to answer these questions, so thank you. So, the first strength that I would say is our staff. I support our staff. I think we have wonderful staff. I want us to become a destination district, not only for students and family members, but for staff members. I want us to continue to grow and add to and take care of our staff, who I think are wonderful. We can't get the results that we want in any of our areas of improvement if it's not for our tremendous staff that we have. Secondly, I would say our leadership. We've done a tremendous amount of work over the last three years of selecting Dr. Davis and helping him build out the team within our district that can take us to the next levels. Lastly, for strengths, I would say our board. We have a strong cohesive board that is respectful and is able to have real conversations and have real disagreements and still work out where we need to be and what the vision is going to look like. If anybody watched the meeting, it was past June, we had a real conversation about literacy, and things changed. The board has given grace for a while, and we are, things are becoming real, and we have the ability of being able to hold people accountable and yet still be stable. Improvements, we have work to do when it comes to staff retention, which is not, which is good. We've seen improvements, but we have work to do with staff retention and staff wages, and that's our next step. Thank you.
This time, the question will go first to Tim. Do you support the district's current policy of addressing requests to ban books? Are you supportive of banning certain books, and which books would you ban?
I have been asked this question before, and I've looked up the district's policy, and I find it reasonably, I think it's a reasonable policy. Do I want to ban books? In large part, absolutely not. I take issue with a single parent's perspective being offended by a book, meaning that all other children in the district are not allowed to have access to that. That said, there has to be some limits, and I think one of the books that a lot of people like to talk about is the Gender Queer Book, and I see the value of it in terms of some students that struggle with their gender identity, you know, to have that access, that resource to that, that's an impressive, they need that to be able to do that in private. My struggle is, for that particular book, is there is a graphic depiction of oral sex, and that's a tough one, to think that that is going to be appropriate at, say, the middle school level, that, like, a 12-year-old probably shouldn't see that. Do I believe we should ban it? Probably not. I would be more interested in finding some sort of program such that there is parental approval before we ban something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher?
I'm not in favor of banning books. I think right now, we have a tremendous push for our literacy rates, and I would personally rather see our kids be able to read those books before we take those books out. The emphasis on making sure our kids are reading at the appropriate levels is where I would rather have our focus be. We have board policy that can handle requests to review those books. If there's any questions, we have a policy that goes through the schools. There's an appeal process through the administration, and then eventually would come to the board if needed, but, you know, so we have great policies already in place to handle these situations, but in general, I am not in favor of banning books.
Thank you. Chris?
No, I don't believe in banning books, but I do believe that books should be age-appropriate, and we have a policy in place to guide us through that process. There's media specialists, principals, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe that there's some parental responsibility to, that can maybe be included in some of that decision-making. But no, I do not believe in banning books. I don't believe in censoring information. I don't believe in hiding from things that are the truth that have been written just so that someone else can promote their side of the truth. I think that we need informed children that are guided by having access to all the information. However, it needs to be age-appropriate. So, that's my answer.
Thank you.
Okay, so this question is going to start with Christopher, I believe. What specific actions would you direct the district to do to address the enormous racial disparities in suspension actions and learning outcomes?
The number one thing I would direct the district to do is to reach out to the community. We have a tremendous amount of involved community members who are passionate in this area, and I believe they have quite a few great ideas to help with these areas that we can improve. I do know the administration has worked to try to find solutions, because the disparities are there. The numbers are disappointing. Higher percentage of Black and Brown students being suspended, being expelled. We've put in an abeyance program over the last couple of years that has tried to avoid expulsions until it can no longer be avoided, but we have work to do in this area. We have a lot of really involved, as I said, community members who are having conversations. I know our district is meeting with those people to try to find solutions. We're not doing a good enough job yet. We have a lot of work to do in this area, and so we have continuous conversations around this, and, I mean, I think it's fair to say that we still have work to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Chris?
I mean, I'm going to take accountability when things aren't where they need to be, and as a board, we've certainly tried to do everything that we can to better this part of our system, but the system's got a lot of work to do in this area, and I think that that work will be completed by, or we can start moving in the right direction when we start breaking down, figuring out how to break down as many barriers as we possibly can. I see it out in the community with people that I work with, you know, that have disabilities or socioeconomic things or whatever, right? We have to adapt our system to make it the best that we can for all people that are in... that are in it. And we need to keep pushing forward so that there's community engagement, culture, trust, the right curriculum, all of those things. And, and all that stuff needs to be on a continuous improvement process, which I like that we're starting to put KPIs in place so that we can continue to monitor how we're doing in those areas. And we need to be honest and real about things, when we fall short and when we achieve things, and have real conversations. And I'm hopeful that some of the latest moves that we've made in administration can give us some insight into these, into these areas so we can continue to break down barriers, so, and move forward. So, I'm excited of where we can go on these issues, but right now, we're not where we need to be. And thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Tim?
I think the district really needs to first get out and substantially engage those people in this community that champion diversity, equity, and inclusion, and, and look very carefully at those disparities. Again, I'm content at allowing the counselors and the frontline workers to give recommendations, and for the board to base policy and, and take action based off of that. But the one thing that I'm really concerned about is, again, transparency in the use of data, that we see things like disparities in the amount of students that are suspended. We see that once a year. And then we hear that here's, here's our action plan, but we're not going to see whether there was any true results until the next year. And I'm going, the district has that data. It should be released on like a monthly basis so that you can monitor it, so that if we're making true results, we can see that, and we can celebrate that. But if we're not making any improvements, then we can take action. We can ask for us to change something else. That's what I think we need to do in this regard that I haven't seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks. Chris Wright, right?
I'm up.
You are up. And he's nervous. This is one of our audience questions from tonight also. What potential conflicts of interest might you face as a board member?
I think that you have to be real careful as a board member, to make sure that you're not delving into anything where you can have any type of personal gain in any such way. And I've been really careful to make sure that I don't have, have any situations where I benefit personally, or anyone I'm close to benefits personally from this position at all, because we have to make big decisions. I mean, we get to make decisions on what will go, what will or won't, won't go to referendum, right? And if you know a friend or something that possibly wants to buy a building and fix it up or whatever, you gotta be careful so that you're not involved in that situation or have any TIF money involved in that situation or anything. So, you gotta be careful so that you distance yourself from being viewed and having any type of conflict at all. And I'm very careful about doing that all the time. So, I haven't had any come up. I don't plan on having any come up, but thank you very much for the question.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, Chris, you just pointed out my conflicts. I appreciate that. I am a developer. I do have developer friends. And so, the one conflict that I would have is if a school came up for sale, and one of my friends or myself wanted to buy it. And it's easy enough to recuse myself from that. You know, but I would say that even though I have that conflict, the benefit of having somebody that understands, say, historic preservation and what you can do with buildings is actually going to provide a great asset when we are considering what we want to do in the future with these buildings, that right now, we seem to take the attitude of old buildings need to come down, and I don't necessarily believe that. So, that would be my conflict. Thank you.
Christopher?
Yeah, so, I have two conflicts. One of them is my wife, who's currently a substitute teacher in the district, who may be an employee in a different role in the near future. So, I have recused myself from any votes regarding substitute teacher pay. And then I am the administrator of a surgery center in NINA, and we are part of the health insurance plan that the school district has. And so, I have had to recuse myself from votes on the health insurance plan, based on those patients are directed towards our surgery center, since we are part of a low-cost plan that is offered. So, those are the two areas that I've had to recuse myself from, and will continue as there are conflicts.
Thank you all for sharing that information. Karen?
Okay. I think this goes to you, Tim. With private school enrollment nearing 50% or more of student, with private school enrollment nearing 50% or more of students open-enrolling out of the school district, what can the school board do? And I think that's supposed to be with private school enrollment reaching nearly 50% of open-enrolled or, or student or school choice. What can the school district do to increase the enrollment in Ashgosh area school district schools and decrease the, the family's choice of enrolling elsewhere?
I think that's pretty simple, that all the things that I had talked about in the beginning, first, student achievement. When you're saying only 36% of kids are proficient in English or math, I don't take issue with a parent looking elsewhere, per se. You see these disparities. You see parents saying they have a hard time recommending the district. When we have those kinds of results, this is what's going to happen. So, it's, it is kind of just a generalized, we need to improve the district overall. And if that can happen, hopefully, we would see less enrollment in other districts who are going to the private school vouchers. But as long as these are the results that parents are seeing, this is probably what we're going to be faced with. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Christopher?
Yeah, I think it's important to understand what's going on in our communities around us, not only in the private schools, but the public schools around us. NINA just built a brand-new high school. Most schools within our athletic conference have brand-new high schools since I graduated from Ashgosh West in 1999. It's, it's important that we are aware of that. People do open enroll to new buildings, to new learning spaces, to new opportunities. And so, I think it's important that we continue our facility plan to make sure we are setting ourselves up for the, the next generation of children who will have different opportunities than the same ones that I had when I graduated from here. Achievement is important, and we want to be a destination school district in, in many ways, not just athletics or extracurricular activities. It's important to note that our two high schools, Ashgosh North finished first in our FEA conference when it came to school report cards this year, and Ashgosh West finished third. Those are important parts for us to tell our story. Our growth numbers are very high. I think it's in the top 88th percentile of the state that our school district, our high school students are hitting our growth numbers. And achievement will come. And so, it's important that we, we tell that story of where we are going and what the Ashgosh area school district can offer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Chris?
I think, like, there are kids that are, are starting to come back. My kids are obviously in, you know, fourth, seventh grade, ninth grade, so I know a lot of what goes on to the decision-making as far as people choosing schools based on what and whatnot. But it does come down to the product that we put out as a district. And people are getting more excited about what's happening here, because we're, we're starting to do things. I mean, we're not just letting schools age like crazy and not having plans on how we can better our district. Even though we talk about, we talk about literacy scores have been talked about a lot tonight, however, that's a national-wide problem. Every school district is having that, those types of issues. But how you address them is important, and people see us starting to take steps in the right direction. Literacy scores did go up 3% last year. We're not talking about a district where literacy scores fell. They went up 3%. And if they go up, if they keep going up, that's a strong, a strong sign. Kids and families are starting to re-recognize Ashgosh School District as a school district where they want to send their kid in the future. And the more that we continue to improve, the more students are going to come here. And I think that that's a combination of smart facilities planning and academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. This question goes to Christopher first. Should private and voucher schools receiving tax money be required to submit performance reports?
If you're taking public funds, there should be accountability within the process. And I'm not a fan of the voucher program to begin with. I like the product that our public schools can offer. But if this, this is the program that we currently have, I do not think it's unfair to ask that we have accountability, the same for everyone. And if you're taking public dollars, it's fair to show the same kind of data that the public schools are required to show, whether that's achievement data, disciplinary data, whatever that might be. I think it's fair that we should all be held to the same standard. So, thank you.
Chris?
Yes. If you're taking public money, you should be accountable for the type of product you're putting out, just like we are. I have no problem with people picking where they want to send their child. A few years back, I had a couple of children that were in private schools. We decided to bring them back for a bunch of reasons. But I don't think that anyone should shy away from competition or accountability in any space ever, because that's what breeds success. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Tim?
Yes. If, if somebody's getting public dollars, there needs to be some accountability. And I would argue, though, that the private schools do get audited. They do report out their testing data. What I struggle with is, for example, we had the state superintendent get out and provide an analysis where they said, oh, look at how our public schools are outperforming the private schools. But when you look at how they do the analysis, they don't count a student that didn't take the test in, well, they do count a student that didn't take the test in their percentages. And so, for the private school kids, the ones that don't get vouchers, they don't take the test. And so, all of a sudden, that substantially reduces the percentage of people that look like they are being proficient, where when you factor that out, it looks like the private schools are doing just as well as the public schools. And so, a lot of times, when I see this accountability stuff, it's a misnomer. There's a lot of politics in the state around this. I think we need to accurately look at the results in both achievement, finances, everything. But yes, they should be held accountable, too.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we're back to Chris.
Yes.
Okay.
That comes around fast.
Yeah. Well, I've done this a few years, and I have to say, these are some of the toughest questions we've had on a panel. So, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. In what ways can the district better address the emotional and mental health needs of not just students, but also of teachers and staff?
I think we've been, we've been working on that, because it's, that's a very, very important thing. And one of the things that we do is we take, you know, staffing engagement surveys. We just started offering a wellness app, I believe. And while our staff engagements surveys since Dr. Davis got here, we were at, I don't know, like 23% of people engage or something. Don't quote me on that number, but now it's in the 46% range. So, that tells me that teachers are a lot more engaged and active and liking their job, and that's a real positive thing. But we need to be cognizant of continually putting in things to improve wellness, and either through the health plan or through benefits, through listening, through building culture. Building the right culture helps with a lot of these things. So, that's part of a continued improvement process, like everything else. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you, Chris. Tim?
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. In what ways can the district better address the emotional and mental health needs of not just students, but also of teachers and staff?
Sure. I, again, I think going back to that app that we talked about previously, having a means to report things is going to be very useful. You know, I saw, I think maybe a month ago, we, we had the student council member of the board present the data from a survey, talking about student suicides and stuff like that. And that's very critical information that we've got to pull out. But where I struggled once again was that the data that was presented was from two years ago. And the argument that was given is, well, that's when the DPI does this. And if you look, the NIH actually publishes that survey, and so, there's a lot of information that we can collect locally, that there's no reason that we can't create the technology to address those questions so that we got timely information, so that we can really evaluate what's going on, so that we can distribute the appropriate resources, get more counselors into the schools to address these issues. Again, to me, it's a lack of timely information to address these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Christopher?
I think it's important that this question is even being asked. I think we're in a better place than we have been to be able to discuss mental health and what we can do to improve. It's a continuous conversation that we need to, to have. The student representatives that have presented the last two years on mental health have done an amazing job. I believe, as Mr. Hess had mentioned, the data that they showcased to us a few meetings back was some old data. And it was the students who put it together. So, as a school board, we didn't, we wanted to be respectful of our students in putting that presentation together, because it's part of a larger conversation. But Mr. Wright at that meeting had talked about that, is that that data was kind of old, and we were looking for some, some newer data that we could use to see what we can do as a board. We continuously ask what the board can do, and we, we challenged Dr. Davis to bring things to us that we can, we can fund, we can help, we can change, if that's changing policy. I think it's all important conversations that we have. As Mr. Wright said, I don't know what your numbers were, but it was 16% improvement in, in staff engagement since Dr. Davis has taken over. So, I think you were pretty close.
I don't know. I know it went up a lot.
And, and part of that is just, is engagement and mental health. And, and that first year, coming out of COVID, we had put in a mental health days, and that was very helpful for us to be able to see what our staff is going through and to find creative solutions to help our staff and our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
It's back to me.
It is.
And to Tim. Do you think that teachers are being paid adequately?
When I met with them, clearly no. You know, what I struggle with is we see the human resources comparisons, and oftentimes, the comparisons are, are done by what is the actual people getting paid there? And they compare that to different districts, when in reality, the comparison should be on the matrix that we have. That's the appropriate. Because what that, what that doesn't take into account, if you do it the other way, is yeah, many of the other districts, they're paying more, but they have more experienced teachers. So, we need to be able to evaluate that. You know, what I struggle with is this last year, the, the governor provided one of the largest per people increases, per se. And the district had already negotiated with the OEA. And I will admit, Chris, Christopher, you did ask the question of administration, is there any more money? And the director of business said, well, we've got, need the money for health insurance. But then you look in February, and all of a sudden, well, we had plenty of money left over on health insurance. And I go, I, I think we struggle with looking at that budget and realizing, it's not just you point to one thing, and because I need more money there, I can't find it here. So, I, I feel like we could find more money for the teachers. Thank you.
Christopher?
Can you just read the question again, just some answering it exactly?
I can. Are teachers being paid adequately?
No. We have heard, not only teachers, but I would say staff in general. We had our paras come before us a couple of months ago and very clearly laid out areas that we need to improve. And I was very happy that they did it, because many times, we don't know what's going on in our buildings if people don't reach out to us as board members. We don't work in the buildings every day. I luckily have my wife, who's involved in, in many of that, and I hear conversations. Chris and I are at events all the time, and we hear about stuff. But that was very enlightening to us to hear what the paras were going through. But that was very enlightening to us to hear what the paras were going through. And this is an area that I have personally challenged Drew, who's our business manager, and Dr. Davis to find ways that we need to improve these areas. We are saving a significant amount of money with our facility reduction. Our overhead costs at, our operational savings at Phil Phillips is over $600,000 this year, projected to be close to a million next year when we combine into the nominee. Don't hold me to that figure, still more to come. But that's a significant amount of money that I would like to see invested back into our staff and to our teachers. We are never going to reach our achievement levels, no matter if we change systems or different curriculum, if it's not for our teams within the buildings. And so we have a lot of work to do on that front, and that is probably the biggest item that we need to push forward to make sure the next part of this goes forward with literacy. But those teachers and staff members absolutely deserve more. Thank you.
Chris?
My answer to the question is no, but we're a lot better off than we were three years ago. My first year on the board, I sat in the Facilities and Finance Committee, and Drew brought a number to us. I think he wanted to go with a 2.3% increase. I was on that committee with Beth Wyman, and we looked at each other jointly or whatever, and we said, let's make that 4.7. And that raise went through the board, which I believe is one of the largest raises in the history of OASD. And then the next year, we followed that up with a considerable raise. So if we keep things moving in the right direction, if we keep doing what we're doing, I think we're going to be on pace to increase teacher salaries by roughly probably 15% in three years, if you include steps and all those different things. So are we at where we need to be? No. But have we made a dramatic jump in the right direction? I don't think there's any metric out there that would show that we haven't, and that we haven't made that a priority. And teachers tell me that. All of teachers call me after I leave here tonight. And they understand that all of our money can't go to salary because we have other issues, too. We have buildings that are old, 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 that we can't just let keep deteriorate. So it's a balancing act. But we're a lot better off than when I first got on the board. I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, Chris. And now Karen will have the last question for you.
All right, thank you. And Christopher? So to wrap it up, is the Ashgosh area school district headed in the right direction, and what changes will you propose if elected?
I firmly believe that we are headed in the right direction, and I'm proud to live in Ashgosh and have my kids in our public schools. There are areas that we need to improve, and we've discussed some of them tonight. There's always going to be areas that we need to improve, but there's also areas that we need to celebrate where we are going. As Mr. Wright said, we have a 3% improvement in literacy over the past year. We are going to continue to see that number go up. We have worked very hard to put the right steps in place to make sure that that continues to improve. But we are, we are making significant changes while improving, and that's important to, to point out. We need to do better with our marginalized groups in this community. We need to do better. We are 70% white in our Ashgosh area school district. That's 30% not white. We have a tremendous amount of work to do to make sure that we have teachers and staff who look like our students. We have administration that looks like our students. We now have a building in Ashgosh named after a black woman from Milwaukee, and that is important. Those are important changes that we are making, and we still have work to do. And we are going to get there, and I would very much like to be a part of the next phase as to where we go, because I see tremendous opportunity in Ashgosh to have an incredible school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Chris?
My answer is yes. We're for sure going in the right direction. I got on the board during COVID. Does anyone remember that period of time and everything that we had going on? And everything that we had to deal with as a board, all the systems we had to put in place. We had to pick a new superintendent. The new superintendent now finally has his team in place. We've done so many things. I have a list of 20 areas or 20 different things that I could say we've improved upon, and most of the data will reflect that our district is improving. I decided to run again because I want to see that through. And then when it's seen, when I see it through, I can hand it off to somebody else. That's what I did was, when I was on the town board in the town of Algoma. People were like, why don't we build a park? And it never got built. I got on the board, we built it, and now there's all kinds of economic growth happening out there. We put the right strategic plan in place, the right people in place, and things flourished and grew. And that is what I believe is going to happen here if we're allowed to finish the job. So yes, and thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Tim?
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. Is the Ashgosh area school district headed in the right direction, and what changes will you propose if elected?
Is it heading in the right direction? Sure, but very slowly. You know, my struggle is, I've, I've heard that literacy scores improved this year. Well, gee, the state average went up by 3.5%. And so actually, our district relative to all the other districts in the state, we went down. So other districts are figuring it out, and somehow, we're not. I've heard that we have amazing growth, but growth is, growth is the change of achievement from year one to year two. If we have amazing growth, our achievement should go up. So what I think that we need is, we need a board that understands what is the information that we have to look at? That if we want to hold people accountable, we need to know what are the metrics and how should they be presented? But the way things are set up right now, our board simply asks our administration, you tell me what I should look at. You present the data. And when you're asking them to present the data, of course, they're going to present it in a manner that doesn't make it obvious that we're struggling in many areas. So one of the major areas that we need, rather than spending money on a communications consultant, I believe we need to spend money on an analyst so that we can look at real results, real data, and really look at, are we actually improving, not just saying that we are? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we've reached the part where we'll give you each one minute for any additional statement you wish to make. We're going to go in reverse order of our opening statements, so we'll start with you, Chris.
I just want to say that it's been a tremendous privilege serving on the Ashgosh School Board the last three years. I've put my all into it. Probably a lot of members in the community have seen me at games and at school functions. I've had open, honest dialogue with anyone that's came forward to me. I've used that information to try to better the school district. And if I get three more years, I'll be all in again, and I will give the district everything that I have, and I'll listen, and I will try to continue to make this a better place. Because now that my kids are starting to get a little older, and I see kids choose to move away, I don't want kids, I want the choice to be so hard for kids to move away that we begin to retain them here and keep them here. So that's my closing statement, I guess. And thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Christopher, you're next.
Yeah, I, the last three years have been an amazing experience, and I still love going to school board meetings. I still love going to our committee meetings, talking to community members to see areas that we can improve. I, I think it's, it's fair to say that we've made tremendous strides, and we still have a tremendous amount of work to do. And that's just honest and where we need to go. And I have, you know, my own kids and seeing the struggles that they have, and I know other families are, are having the same issues and may not have the same kind of support that we have at home. And so, you know, it's important that we put in the work to help all of our students. We've said it repeatedly at our board meetings, all means all. And, and it is important that we help all of our students, and it is a, it is an imperative mission of the board to make sure that we are contributing to that. I believe education is how we change the world, and I believe this is our opportunity to make our community better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
You know, again, I, I think I have been critical a little bit tonight, but I do, I appreciate what these gentlemen have put forward. Anybody that chooses to give the amount of time that it takes to serve on this, I got to give thanks to you guys.
Thank you.
What I bring to the table is, I want to get back to the science of education, actually looking at real hard data to understand, are we moving forward? I feel like where we have been at the last several years is the politics of education. It's easy to say that we're doing well, but the data, the results need to bear that out. And I'll tell you, if you want somebody to look at data, you probably want to have a statistician. So I would ask, maybe you elect me. Thank you.
Thank you all. This concludes the forum for Ashgosh area school board. On Tuesday, April 2nd, you may vote for three of the four school board candidates: Timothy Hess, Christopher Carnes, Chris Wright, and Beth Wyman, who wasn't able to be with us tonight. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Everyone must show a voter ID with your picture on it. You may register when you go to vote on election day if you take a proof of residence with you, but I hope you're already registered. Go to www.myvote.wi.gov to find information on registration, ballot, acceptable photo IDs, and polling places. Go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates. You may also consider voting early or absentee. Contact your clerk for more information. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank everyone for participating in this forum. I want to thank the candidates. I want to thank our panelists, Karen. I want to thank all of the League members who are here tonight to help facilitate, and I want to thank the audience for being here and submitting some really good questions tonight. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Make your voice heard on April 2nd. Thank you.[1734.45][1734.45][music]